Technical difficulties. The time is 5:33 PM on Monday, July 10th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. First, amending our agenda, our city updates. So Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. City Council and Mayor Gradisara, I have a couple of city updates. And the first is to welcome Clyde as the stand-in city clerk this evening. Our city clerk is in the statewide City Clerk Institute for the week, and so she's out, Marissa is, and Clyde is the reader for the night. The second is our wastewater under Andrew Andrews is hosting five townhouse sessions in the coming couple of weeks that will provide information to the community with respect to the discharge-specific variants that the Pueblo Wastewater Department has received previously from the state. The variants will be under review this October, and one of the suggested items is to share with the community and answer any questions. So they've prepared documentation of frequently asked questions, a fact sheet, and then contact information if there's questions. The documents are on the city's website and the wastewater page. They had their first one today. It was just attended by a few community members. The second one is tomorrow at Barkman Library on Jerry Murphy. It is from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They're varying the days of the week and the times of the day, so those that have interest to attend, if they're working during the day, and they're on bus routes if they are during the day. So there's three more. There's one more this week, and then three next week. I have a personnel update, and that is to just let council know that the city attorney interviews will be held later this week to move on to the next step in the process of the mayor hiring a new city attorney. And then I do have some ARPA updates. At your space, at your chair today, is a printout of the electronic document that I forwarded earlier today. It does indicate that there are 6,920,000 and some odd dollars there that are funds remaining, but there are some impending that are sitting on page three of the document that I sent. So the pending projects are either on agendas in the coming weeks or unallocated or pending grant requests for some grant match information or still in conversation and discussion with the community organizations. There is also, on the second attached document, the balance of the $10 million in government lost revenue and government services. And it is, I flipped one too many pages here, it has a balance of $528,023, which with two items that are just in a holding pattern at the weekly ARPA meetings without further processing. If those were to be brought and approved by city council, that would leave a balance of 376,000. The mayor and department directors will be working on submitting updates on the awards that have been made for the lost revenue amounts still to come this summer, so we can determine a good balance moving forward into 2024. As a reminder, all of the encumbrances for ARPA have to be made by December 31st of 2024, and the funds expended by December 31st of 2026. Also wanted to give you an update on the lights-on-for-safety grant application process. It did open on Monday, June 26th. As of this afternoon, we have 39 applications, and the review committee is scheduled to meet soon. I believe the first meeting might be this Friday. So I'll provide updates into progress of awarding and getting the lights-on-for-safety grant dollars out in the community. Then I can move on to tonight's ARPA updates. On the work session, Crazy Faith Ministries will be presenting for a request of $545,000. A resolution is on your agenda this evening for the general services essential worker premium pay in the amount of $424,332. And the second reading of the Southern Colorado Harm Reduction Association Award for $975,000 is on the agenda this evening. And the next meeting on, I think, Monday, July 24th? You should be able to be seeing the United Way request for ARPA funds in the amount of $600,000, and the Neighbor Works ARPA request in the amount of $900,000. Depending on city attorney's workload, there may be a couple of other small ones, like the mural on the east side. It was the $25,000 direction, and I believe, you know, one or other. It kind of depends on the workflow out of the city attorney's office. And that concludes the updates tonight. Do you have any questions and/or directions for next meeting?
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for that update. Questions from council. Councilor Graham.
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Are we going to have work sessions on some of these ARPA remainings, like the Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountains Air Operating, the Span Elementary, the Broadband, Estimate Air, and the giant public safety, and what those large sums include and they're at?
Madam President, there will be in the next step in the process. If those are still being negotiated, is that the right amount? Do they qualify for ARPA? Is the organization's ready? So that's why we don't even have them listed on the left-hand side for a work session. But the process would include a requirement to get city council's direction on any forward-moving project, and there would be a scheduled work session before any of those move forward.
What's the timeframe on that?
I think it's driven by the organization and decisions. For instance, Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega attended the last Rocky Mountains Air Operating meeting with us, and they requested some additional time to put some other information together. They were having a meeting with the Colorado Finance Office to secure funding for the Span Elementary. So those two kind of go together, separate but together, and so they needed about 30 days from our meeting, which was about a week and a half ago, I think. So I think before summer's over, we should be in a good place with anything that is still either unallocated or other projects to be determined.
And then what about the two grants? I know you and I've touched on that, but when's the announcement date, or how does that look?
The two grants that are to the Pueblo Rescue Mission, one is an operating grant, and it has a match that the ARPA funds are eligible to be used for, and it also has a capital grant. And the capital grant content is to be ADA compliant in moving from the current structure when you walk in the door to the women's side of the Pueblo Rescue Mission. And all I could say is that from DOLA, the information is still favorable to move forward in their evaluation, but they have not, they probably will not, until we get final word that the grants were awarded. I believe, and I've always cautioned when it's my guess, but the next 30 days, we should hear one way or the other where the city was funded. The Pueblo Rescue Mission is the applicant on the operation grant. We've heard from DOLA that if it is awarded, they will be asking the city to be the fiscal agent because of the ARPA match.
And that's for the bigger grant?
That's for the match of the 149,000, yes.
And then what was that total grant amount? Do we know?
Yes, near a half a million, I think, just under or just over.
And then are some of these funds going to be used for the demo of the little building next door?
No.
Or where are we with that?
Not yet.
Neither of these grants are going to be used for that?
Other questions for the mayor's office?
I have a question, Ms. Solano. When we're looking at the ARPA approved and pending projects, that whole list, there's a whole section regarding the internal administrative expenditures, which totals around $743,000, $100,000. Can you help walk us through that? Is that, I mean, so there's payroll, 53121 through 63023, but then there's also estimated payroll for '23, '24, '25, '26. Is that for one FTE? Because I know that the city has one FTE. Or what is the personnel that's involved in that? Because that's quite a chunk of change.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's actually two FTE on both sides of the ARPA process. There's been an ARPA coordinator, and you've met Ms. Julia Cordova, who probably is, she'll be joining on Zoom. And the compliance side was the reassignment of a city sales tax auditor to ARPA. And we are having conversations now where we estimated the salaries out till '26 so that we were certain to save those resources, because the compliance side will continue past the 2024 date, past 2026, actually. And we are in a position to talk with auditors to determine, in my accounting background knowledge and working with Alex, we don't know that we can prepay or record prepayment of payroll expenses to go any further than 2026 to encumber those funds. But we would like to see and estimate what those costs will look like for compliance past 2026. But right now, you see through current and then planned for dollars through December 31st of 2026. How we encumber at the end of next year is still to be determined.
So the internal administrative expenditures are just two FTEs?
Two.
Other questions from council? Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Yeah, this is not ARPA-related, excuse me. But I would like to request a work session on, I think it would probably be with the Director of Public Works, Andrew Hayes, to, throughout my canvassing and over this last holiday week, I've heard of a number of issues around speeding, particularly near parks or schools. And so I'd like to see what, so it's not just told to me, it's like available for everybody, to understand what a traffic study looks like and the steps going to either put in rumble strips, a speed bump, or a new stop sign, whether it's four-way or what have you, what that process would look like, if we can schedule that, please.
Thank you, Councilor, and perhaps I can invite both Chief Knoller and Andrew Hayes, the Director of Public Works.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, which is a presentation from the Southern Colorado Equality Alliance. So can I have Mr. Farrell, Mr. Carrigan, and Mr. John Mark Hild at the podium, please? I believe, Mr. Carrigan, another chair is getting brought to you.
Good evening, Chair Martinez, members of council, Mayor Gradisara. Thank you for the invitation to present this evening. A lot of this, I think, you heard from us last summer, so I will try to be pretty quick about the background information. So as a reminder of brief history, the organization now known as the Southern Colorado Equality Alliance began as Pueblo After Two in response to Amendment Two, which was part of the Colorado Constitution legalizing various forms of discrimination, so to speak, against LGBTQ-plus people. Local activists, in response to that amendment, came together, started a nonprofit organization to do outreach and advocacy. In the early days, in addition to fighting against Amendment Two, a lot of the advocacy work was around AIDS and HIV. And since then, I don't know if I'm advancing the slides or if somebody else's. So since then, we've evolved and changed a little bit and become the Southern Colorado Equality Alliance as we know today. Go ahead to the next one, please. And I think we'll have to click through a few times there. So I'm Tommy Farrell. I have the privilege of serving as the president of the Board of Directors for the Southern Colorado Equality Alliance. With us tonight, we also have board members, John Mark Hild and Tom Carrigan, and there's the rest of our board listed on that screen as well. There's quite a few there, sorry. And go ahead to the next one, please. So the Southern Colorado Equality Alliance is 100% volunteer-driven. We have no employees, no staff. Everything's done by volunteers locally, a lot by our board, but other members of the community as well. We, speaking to the history that I mentioned a little while ago, one of our projects currently is a mural on the levee, as Pueblo After Two had a mural on the old levee. We worked with the district to add another mural so that SCA is still represented on the levee. That's a big part of our history, so it's kind of cool that that's continuing. You can proceed to the next slide, please. One of our, I think, most important programs is the Outfront Youth Group, which Joe Mark Hild is the lead facilitator for, meets every Friday just down the street, and offers LGBTQ youth, allied youth, space to come together, do some learning, do some socialization, do games and movie nights. They're even playing D&amp;D Dungeons and Dragons once a month now, giving a place for youth to go that's safe and free on Friday evenings, and that will help youth learn that they're not alone, learn that they have peers, learn that they have support in our community. And it's, as with, I think, any youth program, it kind of ebbs and flows in participation. Sometimes we have 10 people, sometimes we only have a couple, but at least it's there, and youth know that it's a resource available in the community if they need it. Proceed to the next one, please. Our most recent supported group is the Pueblo Pride Seniors 50+ or PPS 50+, which Tom is our facilitator for. And Tom asked for some resources for our elder LGBTQ community as well. So this is primarily a social group that meets monthly. I think especially, and I can let Tom talk to this too, but I think especially post-pandemic, a lot of elders in our community, especially LGBTQ people who might be isolated anyway, felt even more isolation, and this is a way that we're trying to give an opportunity again for a space for people to come together and socialize. Anything you want to add about that one, Tom?
Because of the pandemic, we had a lot of seniors that couldn't get out of the house. They didn't have family maybe here, the spouse was gone. We're trying to open the lines of communication and socialization back in with these folks. So what we're doing is we're a social group, like he said. We have a potluck at my house already. We go to the park and we read books together with each other. We go to the art galleries. We're planning a road trip, a half-a-day road trip. So we're trying to engage the senior citizens, get them out of their house, make sure that them and their families know that there are safe places for them to do, safe avenues, safe places to talk about issues. I'm a Sage representative for, Sage is a national LGBT group for senior citizens. I'm the representative here in town. So what we're trying to do is create, use some of the resources we have here in town, make sure that they each know about them. If you're having trouble getting food, if you're disabled as well, how do we make sure you're in a safe place, a comfortable place, even if it's your own home?
Thank you, Tom. And I, did I see that the next slide was "thank you" already? Oh, well, there's some slides missing there, but that's okay. Our other group, kind of support group that we sponsor, is called Transgenerations, and it is for transgender people and people facing various gender issues. It meets twice a month. Again, is a little bit of socialization, a little bit of education, a little bit of peer support, and John Mark is also a facilitator for that one. Do you want to say anything else about Outfront or Transgenerations?
One of the things that happened at this last meeting is that we had two different couples come from out of state that had moved in because of what's going on. One was from Kansas and one was from Alabama, to a place where they felt more secure. And so I really feel like this is so, you know, so important, that people know that they have a place where they can come and be accepted, or at least not fear, that they can get the health care that they need.
Thank you, John Mark. So then, probably the thing that we're most well-known for as SCA is Pueblo Pride, the festival in Mineral Palace Park every August, but this August is going to be packed with events. Beginning, we're working on putting together a pride art show that will be at the Ethos, and of course, on First Friday, having an opening reception in August for that show. And then the following day, one thing that I'm particularly excited about this year is we've been working with El Pueblo History Museum and History Colorado on their Rainbows and Revolutions exhibit, which had been at the History Colorado Center in Denver up until recently. I just saw boxes of it come into El Pueblo, so the exhibit is moving to El Pueblo. The director, Diane Archuleta, reached out and wanted to make sure that the Pueblo part of the LGBTQ story was very much highlighted in the exhibit. The previous exhibit was much more wider-focused statewide and the metro area, but it was very important to El Pueblo that the Pueblo story was included in that exhibit. So we've partnered, we've done photo intakes, and they're working on oral histories right now. So on the 5th, the first Saturday of August, we will have an opening reception for that exhibit, and that'll be in the community exhibit space, so it's free to access, and it'll be there, I think, through the end of the year. So it's very exciting to be able to not only look at the LGBTQ-plus movement's history nationwide and statewide, but a focus on our local history as well. As part of that, some of the original founders of Pueblo After Two came to one of the events at El Pueblo History Museum, and it was just amazing to listen to them talk about the early days of the organization and what it was like, and just how excited they were that not only the organization still exists, but is still thriving in the community. And then the following weekend, on August 11th, is our Pride Prom, which has been a kind of off-and-on annual event for quite some time now, and we've recently moved it closer to Pride, so it's during the summer. That will also be at Ethos on that Friday evening, and it's a free event for all ages, but a particular focus on youth, to be able to make sure that LGBTQ youth have a safe social prom-like event to attend if, for any reason, they may not attend their school's prom, or even if they do. Here's another opportunity for youth to have a safe, free event in our community. And then, of course, the largest event is the Pride Festival itself, which this year is on August 20th. And I, of course, want to thank council for always being supportive of that event, the mayor's office as well, and especially the Parks Department, who is always excellent to work with, with even such a large event, as we continue to grow and grow. They make it very easy for us to have an event there. And there was another department. Oh, the transit, public transit, which is offering the shuttle rides again this year. They've started advertising them before we even could for off-site parking, because parking can be a challenge in Mineral Palace Park when there are 1,000 people there. So we are working with the county to have an off-site parking lot, and then Pueblo Transit will offer a bus from the off-site parking to the park throughout the day. The parade kicks off at 10:30 that morning around the park. We have an increasing participation in that parade every year. We have had more and more high school bands, drum lines, and those type of groups participate, because that actually makes it feel like a parade when there's marching bands involved. But we have a variety of participants. This year, our grand marshal will be County Commissioner Denea Esgar, her wife Heather Palm, and their daughter Marlo will, as a family unit, be our grand marshal this year. And then, starting at 11, we have a little opening ceremony, an indigenous blessing, remarks from our grand marshals, hopefully a joint proclamation from the city and county, and then we kick it off with entertainment throughout the day. We have lots of great groups, drag performers, acoustic groups, a wide variety of entertainment throughout the day until 4 o'clock. And we'll have, it's looking like about a dozen food trucks, which has always been a struggle for us, but now they're very excited to participate, so we have probably closer to what we need. The lines last year were very long for the food trucks, so hopefully they won't be quite as long this year. And we'll have probably over 100 vendors of various types, from people selling their arts and crafts to community resources for youth and adults and families and elders, banks, nonprofit organizations, a lot of health organizations. There'll be a lot of vendors and resources for the community there. And the whole event is free and open to anyone who wishes to attend. Did I miss anything about Pride or Pride Month? August? Okay. I was trying to run through my list of August events, and I think I caught it. So again, thank you for always supporting our organization and especially Pueblo Pride. We always appreciate that. We look forward to a continued partnership with that. And again, we want to express our thanks to the city departments who aid us in putting such a great event together every year. And we'll turn it back over to you, Chair Martinez, if you have any questions or comments.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Farrell, Mr. Carrigan, and Mr. Hild for that presentation. Questions from council? Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, three, for bringing us, bringing all that information, excuse me, to us. I have a few questions. The art show, Pride Prom, we were at that, I think, last year. A number of us went, and that was phenomenal. Pueblo Pride is always a great event, great swag over there. So how would folks find out about these events more, like, more details?
Thank you. That's a good question. Our Facebook page, which is SCA Pueblo, Southern Colorado Equality Alliance, if you want to look it up that way, always has pretty up-to-date information on it, and our website, socoequality.org, has good information, and we will continuously update that as we get closer to the event. We're working on several methods of advertising, and you'll start seeing posters around town and in the Star Journal and other places as well.
Great. And the Outfront Group, you say that they meet on Fridays down the street. Where would somebody who falls within that age bracket, who wants to get involved and hang out with other folks, where would they go and how would they find out about, get involved with those folks?
We meet at the Colorado Winds office at 304 South Union, 5:30 every Friday. And if they're not there, if they're out in the community somewhere, there'll be a sign-up on the door, too, usually, so that'll help. But also, Outfront Youth Group, Pueblo on Facebook and other social media places, has some information if things change, but...
And lastly, the seniors group, how do folks get involved with that?
Same way. We have a page as well. Anybody that wants to, I get a lot of things on my own Facebook page as well. They send me things. I'm kind of like the, I'm a facilitator. I'm not a boss, because these people make up their own mind as to what they want to do. We try to make about two weeks ahead of time. We try to figure out what everybody wants to do coming up on that Saturday. And it's kind of a little thumb whoever comes up with the best idea, and we all like it. That's what we do. We don't bicker too much about it. So anybody that wants to show up, whether you're gay or straight, I mean, it's just, we want companionship amongst all of the members that show up there, male or female. We've got some really good people. They're asking a lot of good questions as well about what to do in Pueblo. I'm old and I'm gay. What do I do? Come and join us. Well, we've got all kinds of stuff for you to do here, so...
But really, social media is the best place on our socials to stay up to date with what's going on.
Great. Thank you all.
Other questions? Councilor Flores?
This is more of a serious question, because I've been thinking about this for a while. And it's, you know, I'm really proud of our community that we don't see a lot of what's happening nationally. happening nationally, but my question to you is whether, whether or not there is any kind of process that's currently in place, or something that maybe the city could be looking at, and maybe identifying situations. And I would categorize these as hate crimes, and, because we're seeing this nationwide. And I think that, you know, we, we're lucky here in Pueblo, and that I don't hear a lot of information, but I'm, I could also be naive, that I, I'm not thoroughly, you know, but I really believe that, you know, as a city, that we should keep track of this. And I'm, I should have asked this question prior to this meeting as to whether or not we identify that through our police department, but I'm just wondering how you feel about our community in that area, and whether or not we could be doing a better job, or whether you think it really is, it really identifies our city in a positive way.
Thank you for the question, Counselor. I think that we are very fortunate to live in Pueblo for a variety of reasons. I think that I'd also be remiss, though, if I didn't acknowledge that the Club Q shooting happened to our friends and neighbors not far away. So it is, it is still a real concern for LGBTQ people's safety. I'm not aware of any, we've never received any data about tracking incidents. We hear of things every once in a while, but for the most part, I haven't heard much. Just in the oral history that I was giving for History Colorado recently, I mentioned that, that Pueblo is a very unique place in that we're all very neighborly and like to take care of each other, and can see past differences and work together towards solutions. So I think that we're, we're fortunate in that way.
Really happy to hear that. So, but, you know, we need to keep our eye on, on the ball all the time, but thank you for your presentation.
I know that at last regular meeting, we continued an agenda item from the Pueblo Food Project, who's working with LGBTQ populations. Are you working at all with the Pueblo Food Project on that?
That, a lot of that coordination is coming from One Colorado, which is a statewide LGBTQ advocacy organization, but we are engaged with them, and Tom participates especially in those food access projects that One Colorado and the Food Project are working on together.
Great. I wanted to make sure that connection is made. Well, fantastic. We will then see you at Pride on August 20th. If we can help in any way besides transit and Mineral Palace Park stuff, please let me know.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Moving right along then, the next agenda item is an update from the Humane Society of the Pike's Peak Region. So can I have Mr. Adams, Lieutenant Garcia, and Ms. Van Dusen to the podium, please?
Thank you so much for having us back. I'm Duane Adams, the President and CEO of the Humane Society of the Pike's Peak Region, and we're delighted to present to you today, give you some information about what's been happening in the world of animals over the past year. I'm going to start out with giving you a little bit of a presentation, if we could start that. We'll try to be quick and stick to our timeline. Go forward. Do I have a, can I do that?
I believe so.
Oh, excellent. So PACFA, Pet Animal Care Facilities Act, does compile the data for statewide. This is a similar presentation that we gave last year. At that time, we had the 2020, 2021 data. We now have the 22 data to show what's been happening in Colorado. And so I'd like to just walk you through a little bit about, about what's happening there. This particular graph shows what's happening by the county. Now, again, PACFA has approximately 380 licensed animal shelters and rescues around Colorado. And so with this graph, what we're doing is we're pulling all the facilities that happen within a particular county, and breaking that down to show, particularly, we're focusing on dogs and cats, and we're talking about community dogs and cats. So by definition, those are owner surrender or stray animals coming into a facility. Many facilities have other types that come in, such as transfers, they're bringing them in from other jurisdictions or other states. This is just focusing on what's happening in a particular county. And you can see over on the far end, there is the total number of animals coming in per capita by 1,000 people. The Pueblo, last year, I don't remember the exact number, but I think it was like 37, something like that. It's gone up to 40, so the numbers are continuing to rise. To be honest, they're rising at an alarming rate for us, is what's going on here in Pueblo County. And you can see how the other counties are all stacked up. To give you some comparison, because COVID did cause a unique blip in many things in our lives, particularly in animal sheltering, 2020 was a low year for number of animals coming into shelters. So we went back and pulled from 2019 to compare it to 2022, just to see how much of a change there has been. And on the first chart there, we're looking at community cat increases. And as far as the number, overall difference in number, the largest increase was Pueblo County. When it came to dogs, Pueblo was second-largest of the counties. And then when you look at overall percentage increase, because you can see that the number, even though it's large, we still, you know, there's other shelters that handle far more animals. But when you look at that last chart, that's showing you the total number and then the percentage increase. I will point out that Weld County had a weird glitch in their data in 2019. I believe they had some turnover at their, their primary facility up there, because that number, that 834 of dogs, was a very low number compared to their, what they'd had previous to that. But it's still alarming to us that Pueblo is, is a 66% increase in community animals coming in. And you can see that the, most of the counties were at zero or less. I mean, there's only about 20 counties that had an increase compared to 2019. When we start to take a look at that, just to see what's happening in the state, there's some interesting things that happen here. That gold bar is 2019, and then the purple bar at the end, obviously, is 2022. And when it comes to owner relinquished dogs and stray dogs, if you look, you can see that 2019 and 2022 were almost the same. They were pretty flat going across. That's for all of Colorado. If we break that down and just look at the Pueblo Animal Shelter, this is what happens to the chart. So you see owner relinquished dogs up significantly from 2019, or from any other years. Pueblo stray dogs, you know, we were on a nice downward trend going into 2019. It's turned around, it's going back up. And then the overall community intake of dogs is up. Taking a look at cats, cats, interestingly, if you look at 2019 compared to 2021, it's almost flat. So as Colorado as a whole, we've seen a significant increase in cat intakes around Colorado in 2022 compared to '21, which is almost exactly the same as '19. It's interesting to see that flat line, but take a look at, at Pueblo Animal Shelter. You know, you're looking at from 20, I mean, we all know that 2019 was a little bit of a unique year, in that there was two different agencies operating the shelter here. When we look at that, though, and go back prior to that, it was, owner surrendered cats were about 500, year after year. They were on a downward trend. They're up three times that in 2022. Of all these shelters, rescues, everything, when you look at the community cat intakes, the Pike's Peak Region Pueblo Shelter was number three in the state for cat intakes. For dog intakes, they were down, it was sixth, I believe, sixth for dog intakes. And then when you look at combining all animals, community animals coming into a shelter, it's the third highest volume in the state of Colorado. Looking at adoptions, the good news there is that when you look at the actual adoptions in Colorado have been going down, and you've probably seen some news articles and stuff where shelters are reporting that they are full of dogs, we are struggling to find placement for our dogs, all shelters are. The Pueblo Shelter is actually up. It's, it's doing better, primarily because we have more dogs. And then cat adoptions is also up significantly from what it's been, primarily because we have so many more. Even so, there's about 24% of the animals that come into the shelter have to be transferred out to other agencies, primarily up to El Paso County, or some of our transfer partners in order for us to maintain and, and help this many animals. So overall, adoptions, we're not number three. It would be nice if we were on cat adoptions. We are actually 12th in the state on cat adoptions, and we're 15th in the state on dog adoptions. So that's a little bit of a high-level presentation, show you what's going on with the shelter here, and what we're seeing is numbers that are shocking. I'm now going to turn over to Stephanie, and she's going to talk a little bit about what we're seeing in the field, and then Erin is going to finish up with talking to you a little bit about what we've seen so far the first half of 2023.
I wanted to highlight, this is a year-to-date comparison of our, some of our most common call types. Dangerous animal investigations and aggressive animals at large. Certainly, one of our highest priority calls in regards to public safety slightly declined compared to last year. Our animal cruelty investigations have increased, and these calls are typically more time-consuming and require a continued response prior to closing them out. Contained stray pickup, those are a citizen request to pick up an animal who, that has been found, slightly increased, and our injured animal and veterinary transport calls, pretty consistent with last year. And I just wanted to talk about those two call types specifically. Despite those numbers being pretty similar compared to last year, I wanted to share what those calls kind of look like for our officers in the field. I know we've shared with you before and spoken about access to veterinary care and the challenges that come along with that. So I just kind of wanted to run down what, what that looks like. So when we're responding to these types of calls, of course, a call for service will come in from a citizen routed through our dispatch. Calls are entered and then dispatched to the closest officer available. The officer will respond, typically make contact with our reporting party, locate, capture the animal, and then they're responsible for assessing the severity of the injury or illness, and make a decision and determine the need for emergency care. So that's where, kind of from there, that it kind of gets tricky, because with limited access to veterinary care in Pueblo, depending on the time of day, even the day of the week, that determines if we have a local veterinarian, veterinary clinic to transport an animal to. So upon capturing of an animal that does need emergent care, our officer then starts making calls to see if there's a local veterinarian available to treat that animal. And if so, then great, they transport it, and it receives care. And if not, then they have to look to outside veterinarian clinics in Colorado Springs, and coordinate at that time either a shelter staff member to transport that animal, or coordinate with an officer from our El Paso County Division to meet and kind of turn over that animal for further transport. Then, of course, we arrange for pickup from the animal from that emergency clinic the following day. So, you know, you can see that a normally routine call is kind of much more in-depth for officers in the field when they're having to navigate, you know, through these challenges and coordinate with, you know, vet clinics, with our partners up in Colorado Springs, and especially all while other events are happening in the city. And then, lastly, I wanted to share with you that our animal law enforcement team continues to have a community presence in participating in local public events, mainly, you know, interacting with the community members, educating on responsible pet ownership. Some of the events that we've participated in so far this year pictured here are the Goodnight Elementary, Dr. Seuss Reading Day, and where we were reading to elementary students. We participated in the AMR Safety Jam, which, you know, gave us an opportunity to kind of promote that safety, safety piece involving pets. And other responses, we participated in the Chemical Emergency Stockpile Preparedness Disaster Pueblo City and County event that they did. And I, I think that last picture is actually, was a disaster response. It was a fire in Beulah that we assisted in, so...
In addition to that, we...
Oh, sorry. Okay. In addition to that, we have continued our Responsible Pet Ownership classes that we kind of put on jointly with Pueblo Municipal Court. So that's all I have for now.
So thank you for having us here today. I wanted to flip back to our slide from January when we presented, and we discussed some of the challenges that we had in 2022 as a whole. If you remember, we looked at July and how we took in nearly 800 animals in one month. So I'd like to give you a quick, with that kind of perspective, I'd like to give you a quick update on where we are year-to-date. So on the left side is 2022, for a point of reference. On the right side is 2023. We haven't, this data does not include July, and we've already had two months that have exceeded 800 animals in a single month. So our trends are just, are tiring. The team's really tired, I'm going to be honest. This is a lot of animals to be taking in, to be caring for, and to be trying to rehome as quickly as possible. And right now, what we're doing is, is just trying to move them through as quickly as possible, get them healthy and happy and ready to go into homes without any delay, because that's, that's really, as Duane mentioned, every shelter in the state is pretty full. So our support, we're really relying on the team in Colorado Springs, but, but animal shelters are struggling right now. So our main plan of attack right now is just to, you know, streamline processes as much as we possibly can, so that animals are in care for as little amount of time as possible. So demand for services, when we're looking at potential challenges, we, you know, we've been thinking about the economy right now, access to housing for people to care for animals, access to veterinary care, recruiting veterinarians for public surgeries. We know ultimately the solution is spay-neuter, but how do we get veterinarians down here to just, you know, even just the, the top layer, which is pet owners that want their animals spayed and neutered, cannot currently get them spayed and neutered. So that's not even looking at the community cats, the, you know, everything else beyond that. And then, of course, emergency transport, where these animals, people with their beloved family members do not have access to veterinary care for emergencies. And so we are getting a higher volume of those emergencies coming into the shelter because they're just out of options. I'd like to walk you through really quickly, I know we're running out of time, but I'd like to walk you through really quickly the actions we've taken this year to understand the impact. So we partnered with UCCS in Colorado Springs to analyze surrender reason data for dogs and cats. And then what we'll get into more shortly is, is a quick update on how our veterinary community discussion went, a potential Pueblo Community College partnership, and then our facility and the needs there. So walking through, we had our access to care veterinary discussion that we mentioned back in January. We had great turnout. So we had a lot of individuals from the veterinary clinic community in Pueblo attending. So we had a lot of individuals from the veterinary clinic community in Pueblo attending. At the beginning of the discussion, Dwayne asked, you know, if you, how many people would you have to hire today just to be fully staffed? Not to overstaff, just to meet the need. And in Pueblo, just with the people participating, it was 20 to 25 people today. So we were really looking, we were really, the discussion really helped us to understand that this is a crisis about support staff, it's veterinarians, it's everyone in the veterinary community to help meet the need. We got great reception and feedback about that event, so it's something that we do plan to hold regularly to continue to keep a pulse point. Just to give you, again, this is back from January, but just to remind us about where Pueblo stands with access to veterinary care. This is the overall veterinary care accessibility scores and the source is at the bottom if you're curious, but as you can see, a healthy organization is going to be in the 80s and 90, or sorry, a healthy community with good access to veterinary care is going to be closer to 100. And we're, we scored a 29, which is labeled as very difficult, you know, difficult to access that veterinary care in Pueblo. We also have our capacity for care, so that's number of veterinary employees per capita. And we are, again, at a very, very challenging and frightening number there, just in our community, not, not the Humane Society, but looking at the veterinary clinics available to our community to meet the need. So one of the things that we have been working on as a potential solution is a partnership with Pueblo Community College. So they are ready to offer a veterinary assistant course, which we think will be, it's a great tremendous first step towards a long-term solution to, to address the need. Pueblo Community College has asked for $30,000 to cover initial tuition for that initial class in order to, to get the ball rolling and, and make it a standard offering. So we are asking, you know, Pueblo City and Pueblo County to consider tuition for us to be able to, for Pueblo Community College to be able to start this, this course, to help get our Pueblo people trained to be part of the solution when it comes to veterinary care. The next piece, I'm such an engaged presenter, it's very hard for me not to say, any questions before we move on, but we will move on. So the next piece is the building. So we talked about the, the struggles that we have with just the sheer number of animals coming and needing services. I was talking to our chief veterinarian just today about things like ringworm. With this many cats, how do we make sure the cats we're adopting out are healthy and don't have something even as simple as that that can just be devastating for a family and for an animal shelter? So we have been discussing with Animal Arts, that's an organization that specifically designs animal shelters. So I have on the left slide, on the left side, Denver Animal Protection and their most recent building, and on the right side, Laramore Humane Society and their most recent building. So Animal Arts has, is willing to do an assessment to see, for, for a redesign of the Pueblo Community Animal Shelter to help meet, meet the need of the animals coming in that trend-wise are not slowing down. And so we are asking for 15,000, right? Yeah.
Animal Arts is also the architect, the original designer of the shelter. So they did the original design and architects of, of it. We reached out to them because there are some pain points in the current shelter. It's getting old and needs, and there's some newer ways we have of, of sheltering animals. So we reached out to them to see what it would cost to have them come into a full assessment of the building and the current needs. And it was 15, about $15,000 to complete that study.
And then finally, Stephanie and I attended Pueblo Leadership this year and we had a great experience. And we want to call out that the Humane Society really sees tremendous value in this program and we've been sending people, leaders from the Humane Society since 2016. And then we don't have a slide for this, but I would like to wrap up with, with, you know, making sure that everyone's aware that Whisker Ball is coming up. So it's November 11th this year and we'd love to have everyone in attendance for that. So with that, that wraps up our presentation and we're eager to answer any questions that you guys have.
Great, thank you so much, team from Humane Society of Pike's Peak Region. I just want to be clear, so it's 45,000 that you're asking in total?
In total, between both city and county.
Okay. Did that come in your budget request for?
Can I?
Go ahead.
Chair, can I clarify that? The 30,000 with the PCC, that's something that we're still in development on. The 15,000 to do the assessment of the building, that is something that we've sent to the, the city manager and to the county as well to ask them about that. Humane Society is willing to contribute to that assessment as well, but we would like to know that if we, if we were to contribute to it, that there is some likelihood that something could be done, obviously. We wouldn't want to, to pay for a third or a half of that fee only to find out that whatever comes back, it's like, no, there's, there's no funding available to upgrade the facility.
Sure.
So that, that proposal is sitting somewhere with the city and the county.
And were those proposals included in your ask for the 2024 budget? Or are they in addition to?
No, these would be in addition to.
Okay. Questions from council? Councilor Flores?
The, the program where you try to control the cat population, your, your feral cat population, how is that operating now or is it operating?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So it's, it's still in full swing. We do have a barrier with access to veterinarians to spay and neuter. So for example, we saw from last year the record-high intakes in July, so we proactively determined that we wouldn't do any surgeries for community cats in the month of July to be able to focus on the shelter animals and keeping up there. So it's, it's really, it's, it's a, it's a robust program. We have almost 600 colony managers right now, but right now, our, our biggest barrier is keeping up with the need for spay neuter in that program.
The other question had to do with the, as I look, I'm actually looking at the, the report that you put out on a monthly basis. And, and I do, first of all, I think you're indicating there's a correlation between an increase in the amount of animals with a very low ability to find veterinarian care. It, it seems like there's a correlation there. And, but I, I do, you know, I do look at the, I always look at the euthanasia line and you guys still are doing a great job in that area and that you, you probably are working much harder in getting animals adopted than any other maybe animal shelter in Colorado. Otherwise, you would not see that kind of, but, but I mean, I, I look at that in a very positive way, is that you guys are doing everything you can not to, and obviously there's animals that need to be euthanized because of the diseases and, or the injuries that they've incurred. But I, you know, just really the question had to do with the correlation between vet care and, and I think I've asked this question before. Supposedly in Colorado, we have the number one vet school, it's CSU, Fort Collins. And I'm, I'm sure that your group has contacted them, but I, what do you think the solution is there? I know you've got the assistant program, but how do we get vets to come down here?
I'd be happy to try to answer that. It's a very complicated problem. There, there are some solutions, some helps, things that we've come up with. We did, we were part of a group that ran a bill at the legislature to try to open up some things like telehealth and maybe looking at the possibility of creating a mid-level practitioner. These things aren't without controversy. It did, the bill did not get introduced. And so, you know, ultimately what we need is more veterinarians. Even if you had more veterinarians, then you're going to need more technicians, which is just as short of supply as veterinarians. So for us, what we can, what we look at it is what can we do to make sure that veterinarians are spending their time on where their needs are? We have veterinarians that are, because of shortage of assistants or technicians, you have veterinarians that are doing some of the things they could do, well, we can shore that pool up better, quicker than veterinarians. There's no short track to getting a veterinarian. And the national shortage of veterinarians is real and it's just getting worse.
Thank you.
We have one thing we didn't mention that we're doing to try to help increase that capacity is we, we are in the process right now of remodeling our wellness center, which is inside the PetSmart through a grant from PetSmart. We are converting that to be able to do cats spay and neuter and we're really excited about doing that, to really open that up. Unfortunately, we don't have the veterinary capacity to actually do surgery in there right now, but we're hoping, fingers crossed, that people will want some, veterinarians will want to move to Pueblo, it's a wonderful place, and we'll be able to open up and start doing cats spay neuter. Yes, there is a definite correlation between number of spay neuters that are happening and the number of kittens being born.
Other questions? I'm curious, so the, the PCC tuition plus the shelter, how do we move that forward on council? Is there? Ms. Lonner, do you have anything?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of ideas. You know, one of the summer report outs from ARPA dollars that were awarded to PCC, it's been a request for them to, to present later, it's probably on the agenda here. I have to put my bifocals on to see the date. I think they're all coming in August. PCC update, August the 7th. I could ask in advance if they could give you an update or provide an update on how far they've come with the curriculum development and the program design and, and costs associated with it, like they did these other two new programs that they'll maybe be reporting on. If that's, if that's not soon enough, we could reach out to President Ojavec sooner than that.
Yeah, I think let's go ahead and reach out to Dr. Ojavec. It sounds like it's a pressing issue and it sounds like the, I mean, the data shows that we're getting more rendered animals than in all time before. So I think it's definitely a need, so let's reach out to Dr. Ojavec. For the shelter study, how should we proceed with that?
I, if there was a request submitted to the mayor's office, it's likely in the pile for the 2024 budget and I'll have to pull that out tomorrow when we get to the office because it's not a 2024 budget request, it's a current request. And then also, the Humane Society does not submit a, an annual budget request because you entered into and approved a three-year contract, I believe, last year. And so it's not an annual non-departmental request, it's a part of that contractual request, but I will look for that letter. It probably came into mayor's admin assistance and it's sitting in that pile.
Well, we have to look further too. We have to see that we, if we have funds to expand the shelter. I mean, they just said they didn't want to waste money on a study if there weren't funds to expand it, so it's got to be a deep trail of what we need to look into.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much, Humane Society. And thanks for all the work that you do for animals too. Okay, last on our agenda is a Crazy Faith proposal. So Mr. Lonnie, come on up. Okay, and I know that we've talked with you, Tammy, and you spoke at public forum last time, but if you could say your names just for the record, that'd be great.
Tammy Kynes.
And you as well.
Malia Johnston.
Thank you.
And Lonnie Kynes.
All right, Mr. Lonnie, whenever you're ready.
Well, I would just, actually, they are going to do the presentation. I am going to listen. If they have any questions, then I will help them out.
Okay, so we'll start first with Crazy Faith mission statement. Making a difference in our community by loving our neighbors well. We provide basic needs to those that need it most: food, clothes, counseling, healthcare, employment, transportation, housing, mental health, addiction and other life-controlling issues. And so, like even just food right there, even just food, people will give us phone calls and they might need food for the day, they might need food for the week. And this, this does not just homeless either. This is low-income families that their food stamps have ran out for the month. And, you know, we don't want to see anybody go hungry. So food is a lot of what we do to a lot of different families in a lot of different ways. Sometimes it's buying groceries. And when we do that, sometimes we do a food card, other times we're typically meeting them at the store and letting them pick out, you know, $50 worth of food because they're not going to eat what I eat, so that's the best way that we've found to do that. So all of those different things are multifaceted there. And then also just want to make note for those of, those people that don't know much about Crazy Faith, our goal is to always help them to get to a better, more stable place. And so then, also, we don't want to be out there enabling anybody.
It's the night of technical difficulties, Tammy, so you're good.
So how we serve our community, these are just a few of the things that we do. Greyhound bus tickets, city bus passes, and those are for different, different things. You would not believe how many times my phone rings and somebody is stranded at the transit center. And we're talking 19-year-old females and it's not a safe place for them to be stranded. Or like last Saturday morning, got a phone call at about 5 o'clock in the morning, hey, Tammy, I see this gal down here, she needs help. And so we helped to get her to Texas, I believe, so she didn't get stuck in Pueblo, she didn't get harmed because unfortunately, we do see a lot of that happening. Lights back home, travel expenses and intake fees to rehab. So I think that we're probably the only one in the city that's doing this. And so when we started our ministry, our outreach seven years ago, people were coming to us as we were going into their world and saying, you know, what issues are you struggling with? They were coming to us and too many of them were saying, Tammy, I tried heroin and now I'm stuck on it and I want off. Or any of the other drugs that we all know about. And so they come to us and when they're ready, they know to come to us. Crossroads sends many people to us, Detox, all kinds of other agencies. They know that if somebody's struggling with addiction or life-controlling substance, substance abuse or mental health, we can get them into treatment. And so at first, we thought, well, we'll see what's local here. And a lot of people had been through Crossroads. And so that when the people are really serious, even Crossroads will say that, that they'll give them our number. So when they are truly, truly wanting change, they'll come to us. So it costs us about $1,000 to get somebody into treatment. So that covers intake fees, application fees and travel expenses. We send them out of state typically because it's the best thing that we've seen happen. So we have several that are out of state right now and they're 75% success rate. Some of them will come back to Pueblo, some of them don't. And we've seen them succeed in both areas. Enrolling clients to the inpatient drug rehab and for those, it's anywhere from two months to 13 months, depending on their circumstances. Rent assistance, first month and deposit, individualized counseling and case management. Case management is, is quite extensive of what we do and who we work with. Obtaining ID, driver's license, birth certificate and social security cards. In the beginning, we had to, it was a process that we had to learn. And so we can do all of those. And I think that the rescue mission had presented at one time that, in the news this week, that it's a setback, but we've been able to streamline a lot of those services. We do the one-night hotel stays and we do work with the chaplains and the police department on that occasionally also. We have a Sunday morning community breakfast to the Pueblo community. The, the soup kitchen, for those of you guys that don't know it, is closed on Sundays. So we kind of cover that. It's also helps us to reach that part of the community that is in need and then it sets up relationships. We have Sunday afternoon lunch, open and free to the community. We help them with SSI and those resources. And I can tell you, in the seven years that we've been doing this, I've only helped two people get on disability. Because our motto is if they can work, you know, 20 to 40 years old and they're able to work, they should be working. And so we encourage them in that area. And then just some other varying helps. We do work with a lot of the other agencies here in town. Our current financials and numbers that we serve, our monthly budget averages about $5,000 per month of what we're bringing in. These monies come from churches and private donors that are already established. We receive tangible items throughout the year, you know, hey, how would you guys like to help? And people will donate along with the meals coming from churches and private donors. So last year, 20 to 2023, we helped approximately 100 people get off the streets of Pueblo. We averaged about 100. Now realize this is, majority of this is with Lonnie and I running this as a volunteer and then we have volunteers that help us. Nobody is, we've never had staff. So if we- So if we had a few staff, we could double or triple those numbers. We served over twenty meals last year. We helped over twenty-five individuals. Over twenty thousand meals last year, and we helped over twenty-five thousand individuals last year. My phone can sometimes ring up to seventy times a day. And when we were running the warming center, it was about a hundred phone calls a day. And I'm answering every one of those within a twenty-four-hour period. So that was over twenty-five thousand people that we were helping last year. We help about twenty people each year to get into treatment. And so for our current location, I think everybody knows where we're at in the downtown location on Fourth. It has been sold, and so the new owner will be taking over and we will need to be out within two to three months. We did not necessarily see this coming, but we've been looking for a building for about two years since we've been out growing this for a while now. We don't have enough bathrooms there. We have two large rooms and one small storage room. It's about twenty-six hundred square feet. We slept about sixty-five people last year.
So as Tammy said, they had the privilege of being the warming shelter for the last year with the city's support, along with churches and volunteers. So in case, you know, so I talked last week a little bit, and I think some of you heard, but there's an estimated about five hundred chronically homeless in our streets every night. And that's information from the rescue missions and those that are helping this population. So I think the common thread that we're seeing is we're thinking that the rescue mission or PASADA can do it all. And that's not necessarily true, because my understanding is there's approximately about a hundred beds. But if we're on a cold winter's night, if we have five hundred in the streets, a hundred is not sufficient. So then where do they go? They'll commit a crime, they'll go to jail, they'll fake an illness, they'll be at the hospital. So they'll start taxing other agencies and places to stay warm. So part of the thinking, too, is, and these next videos, I think they're in here, if we can play them, I'm not sure. So on the next slide are some firsthand accounts from our homeless population. We wanted to show that to you just so we can, as a city, understand the mentality. It's not necessarily the truth, but it's their truth, and they're basing their decisions on what they understand, what is happening at the rescue mission. So in no way are these videos meant to throw anybody under the bus or, you know, to be negative in any way. This is, we just wanted to show you what the folks are saying. So if we can click, are we able? Are we able to? Nope, nope. I don't know. I don't know if that works. Can you be double? Oh, okay. No, there's no volume. Can you pause her? Oh, there's the volume on the bottom left.
So if our city computers can't play them, we get these slides and we can always play them on our own time.
Okay. So just to sum up her responses, basically, she's under the impression that the rescue mission does not accept those who are disabled or incontinent. And so she thinks that she's not welcomed at the rescue mission. The other, there were two men on the second video, one saying he would never stay at the rescue mission, "I'm not going to stay there." And so, and then another individual said he did not feel welcomed. There's too many rules and policies. And so those types of responses, you know, we take with a grain of salt because we, you know, we don't know what they experienced, but that's their perception and that's what they're basing their decisions on. I know it's been talked about before as far as overdoses. I know that's been discussed here on this floor. As far as, you know, are counts rising for overdose deaths? If you look at your own data, the city data, on the next slide, you'll see that there is a spike around October, Thanksgiving, Christmas, the winter months, there's a spike. What that means, we can guess. Maybe it's a holiday, maybe it's a trauma, maybe it's they have no place to stay. But in any case, we are definitely needing an additional warming shelter, a permanent warming shelter. We've talked about that for years in our city. And like I said, the rescue mission can't be the only resource. PASADA can't be the only resource. YMCA can't be the only resource. We need an additional warming shelter for those emergency nights so they're not taxing other agencies within our community, specifically the jail and the hospital. And the list can go on.
So I wanted to also touch on, so as we had our doors open last year, for whatever reason, when we started to get very full, because we wanted to keep capacity at twenty-five for men and twenty-five for women, but we were consistently running forty-four on the men's side. And I was literally like in there going, "Don't y'all want to go across the street?" And for whatever reason, the majority of them staying with us didn't want to. And so that's their reasoning. So there's definitely need for us to be open or we wouldn't need our doors open. So many cannot or will not stay there, and we can submit video after video of those saying that. Also, I believe that, the next slide, I believe that the city's helped with about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars about three years back when they opened it up at the warehouse on Blake. And so we'll get to a slide here in a minute. We're asking for about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and this is going to be a permanent solution. You know, hopefully for at least, you know, the next five years, depending on what happens in the city of Pueblo. And that money that was given was only temporary for about four months.
We can skip that one.
So and then Crazy Faith warming center was full nearly every single night, except for, I think, like the first night that you were there when people were still figuring out what was going on. So the other thing is, we did realize that there was a lot of people that we weren't seeing on a typical average day during our street ministry, but with that warming center open, a lot more people came through those doors and we were able to connect them with resources.
So Crazy Faith is really a stepping stone to additional services. It's that front door for those who would not necessarily seek services, who don't want to seek services, or whatever the case. So the irony is Crazy Faith is, will be homeless. And so we're asking the city for four hundred and... Forty, I'm really bad at numbers. We're asking for a lot of money, four hundred and forty-five thousand, for a building in addition to a hundred thousand for renovations for bathrooms and kitchens. We have a building in mind. We did not put the address on purpose because we know it's been kind of a hot topic in our community. "No, you can't have it there." "Oh, you can't be my neighbor." And so it's purposely not there. But there is a building that Crazy Faith does have in mind, and we can discuss that at a later date. But that is the proposal. By doing that, the city will have a permanent emergency warming shelter for those bitterly cold nights so that people aren't freezing in our streets. They do have other options. And when the rescue mission and PASADA are full, then Crazy Faith will open for that emergency warming shelter.
So that's what the building would be used for, is the emergency overnight warming center, so that we're not coming October and going, "What are we going to do? Or are we going to try to get a tent? And are we going to try to, you know, have these warming fires or whatever?" Because that's what kind of happened in the last couple of years. We get down to the wire and we're like, "What are we going to do?" So there is a solution already there. And so the other use for those building, that building would be for me to go ahead and put two staff in there so that those doors are open probably six days a week so that people can still get the resources that they need. Lonnie and I are usually out in the field, so we have a hard time keeping somebody there. So we're in and out, in and out, in and out. So we know that with that permanent building, we'll be able to help a lot more people. So that is all we have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Kynes and Ms. Johnson for that presentation. Questions from council? Councilor Graham?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. So in your slide deck, you stated that you have about a monthly five thousand dollar budget, but I also heard you say that sometimes you're spending up to a thousand dollars a month to send somebody away for, excuse me, addiction therapy. So how does that work? I mean, that's a good majority of your budget.
If we have the money in the bank, then we send them. But other times, it's calling a few different resources, like Celebrate Recovery and a couple of other different churches. We know that we can call on them if the funds aren't there. And so it's amazing how it actually does come together when somebody's in need. It always gets put together and they're always able to be sent.
So that five thousand dollars isn't just strictly for outreach?
That's for operating, that's for food, that's for clothing, that's for everything, including the rent on there and everything.
A very slim budget.
We're very frugal. If we can make a dollar stretch and if we can help two people with the same dollar, we're going to do it.
Yeah.
That's the way we run our own family.
What is your monthly rent now, where you guys are at?
Currently, we're at, we were at twenty-five, but as soon as the new owner moved in, rent went up and then we...
Twenty-five hundred?
We were paying twenty-five hundred for twenty-six hundred square feet. And so that was pretty low for us. But now it's went up two hundred dollars and we're having to pay all of the utilities on top of that.
Did you guys pay utilities before? So this five thousand dollar budget, twenty-five hundred dollars a month of it was just for your overhead costs?
It was for the rent and then all the outreach.
Okay. And so how would you, you know, if the city was to purchase a building, how would you maintain the building and keep going with such a low budget?
Well, what it's going to do is we won't have the rent cost, so that's going to be able to help us to help more people. The building is in great condition, so we'll be able to maintain it just fine. And then also, if we're able to get a building, we're going to do a couple of fundraisers and all that to raise support.
And then one last question. You talked about case management and counseling. Do you have that on site? Or do you guys provide that counseling? Or what does that look like and how often?
That is mostly life experience.
So not licensed therapy or counseling, just...
Nope. And most of your people that are on the streets, they're not going to go to a licensed counselor anyways, and they don't have the money to do it. So it is really the school of hard knocks. I have twenty-seven years of recovery under my belt, so I can speak to them pretty well.
And then the caseworker part of it, that's just something that you guys have learned over the last seven years on who to call, what to do, and how to get things done.
And I think that Heather, you had said it's just so hard. And that's what we saw when we started helping people. They'd have to go to ten different places, and by then they're frustrated, because I get it. I get frustrated going to the ten different places and getting told, "No, and you're at the wrong place." And so we've learned to streamline it. We just have relationships set up at Motor Vehicle, and we have online processes to do their social security card and their birth certificate. So sometimes we can get a birth certificate within twenty-four hours.
And then one last question. If the city was to purchase a building and it wasn't just specifically for Crazy Faith, but more of a wraparound services type of facility with other people under the same roof, is that something you guys would still be interested in? Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
This new building you're looking at, how many people would you be able to service out of that building?
As far as for the warming center, we're hoping fifty and fifty, fifty men, fifty women, so that would be doubling our capacity from last year.
And the reason I bring that up is that when we did open up an emergency shelter, which we had to do two or three years ago, we also had to suspend under an emergency ordinance the requirements that a regional building authority or building inspectors. And that is, you know, if you can buy a building for the amount that you're looking at, I'm not sure the hundred thousand would be sufficient to be able to, I don't, and I don't know what the requirements would be, but that could be a very hefty, expensive...
As far as the reconditioning the building?
Not reconditioning, but including, you know, whether the building has to be sprinkled. You may not, you may need...
There is sprinklers in there.
Okay. You may need more than one bathroom. You may need...
That's what we're asking for the hundred thousand, is to put more bathrooms in there for the warming center.
And we've already had a plumber in there, even though we don't own the building. We've had one able to go in there. We also believe that we'll be able to put one shower in there.
Right.
Several of our volunteers are also mental health workers, firemen, electricians, ex-cops. So, you know, our volunteers are coming with a wealth of information and a wealth of knowledge on how to address some of those issues because they are concerned. They are concerned about our community, so...
And basically, it's just one of those questions that I have, to make sure that you know what the costs are going to be to upgrade that building because they may pay a lot more than what you're budgeting. I also am concerned about your revenue stream because you're going to have much higher utility bills, you know, with the building that's going to house a hundred people.
Well, and that's part of being able to have the building with offices. So the reason why we said that we have the current twenty-six hundred square feet with two large rooms, there's no room for offices. So I've never had an office, never had a desk to sit at. You know, we're either doing everything mobile or we're walking in and just setting up a table and chairs, but the job gets done. And so this new building has up to three office spaces. And so then that's where we're going to place staff in there almost immediately. So it is actually move-in ready with two, actually three restrooms. But we want that extra funding to put in two extra toilets, two or three extra toilets, and then a shower, and then the kitchen. I mean, we're providing twenty thousand meals a year, and we don't have a commercial kitchen. We don't have a kitchen in our current building.
Thank you.
Counselor Mastry?
How did you, did you help out during the flood of everybody that was coming?
Yeah, so when the first flood came through about three weeks ago, my phone started ringing about three-thirty in the morning. "Tammy, Tammy, the water rose up so high." We weren't expecting it to come up to our camps. And so it was like, okay, is this an emergency? Is this poor planning on their part? Or is this an emergency where I need to go in and help? So we got up and went in and helped. And the biggest emergency need right then was for clothes. They were soaked. And nobody needs to be walking in soaked clothes. So the biggest need was blankets and shoes and socks and jeans and clothes. We did do a couple of tarps. Everybody knows I don't do tents. It's a rare occasion that I'm going to do a tent because for me, that's encouraging them to be homeless along the riverbed. And so we are known for, if you want to get out of homelessness, come talk to us and we'll do whatever it takes to get you into place. So yeah, and so then the phone calls kept going and kept going. We actually, we had just planned to go in and help a few people, but it turned into quite a few more people and a few more hours, you know, people that were wet and cold. And then that continued on through that day and then a couple of days, and then the next flood came, and then the next flood came. So about three weeks of helping out.
You always find the money, you always usually find the money, don't you? Or the resources?
We put an APB out there, you know, because we ran out of shoes completely.
When I, I told her, I said, "They're going to ask where the money comes from." And I said, "It's in the name. It's Crazy Faith. It's in the name."
And it's been going for seven, what is it, seven years?
You know, letting the need be known, you know, even the flood, several churches, boom, jeans, you got it, you know? So...
It's the community coming together is what it is.
It is.
And that's where we lack. We haven't been coming to the city and giving full updates because we've been doing it kind of on our own. And so we want this to be a better relationship between us and the city and working together. And then pulling on out more resources from more community members as they know more about what we do. So that's why we're here tonight.
I think it engages the community into more donating from their checkbooks rather than expecting their, you know, taxes to be used for a lot of things. And so I think it really does, when you have a service with integrity. And I've noticed that you guys have put a lot of your own resources into it, and you've been able to gain resources from other entities. And I've noticed that you guys have put a lot of your own resources into it, and you've been able to gain resources from other entities. I know that you, you work with the other 501(c)(3)'s if they have something, and, you know, you collaborate and work.
It's amazing when we all work together, we can get the job done and we can help more people. I think we can really, I don't know that there's any solving the issue, but we can put a dent in it.
Exactly, thank you.
Counselor Warner?
Hi, thanks for that presentation. Is Crazy Faith Ministries a national organization?
No, it's just in Pueblo, but we've had many people, especially Colorado Springs, ask us to start one there. And I just cannot, but we do get phone calls from all over. So one specific instance, we had a, a group from Tennessee call us this last week and say, "Hey, can you train us? Can you teach us? Can you give us pointers?" Because it's a national issue, we've had people come from...
I just noticed that there's like one in Ohio, I mean, if you Google that, it's in several places. Is the, is the name, is that a brand that's... Interesting.
As far as I know, there was a guy that wrote a book on it. But no, I didn't know there was any other organizations when we started ours, there wasn't any.
And you came in, what, 2017, 2016? 2017? All right, thanks.
I guess this is more of a question for Ms. Lano. Does the city currently have a plan put in place for the wintertime for temporary warming shelter?
Mayor Grant, are you or I?
Well, we, we've got several possibilities that we're working on. You know that we acquired the building next to the Pueblo Rescue Mission, which we're going to knock down. We have, or we had a grant into DOLA for a structure to be put there, that probably is not going to be awarded this year. That land will be available for a tent, which is why Pueblo Rescue Mission asked us to acquire it. They said they could put a warming shelter in a tent there, a heated tent, in the winter. Now, we're still in the preliminary stages of discussing that with them. We have a, a meeting set with their board of directors a week from today, to sort of fine tune those details and make sure everybody's on the same page. So that's what the plan is. Certainly, if Crazy Faith ends up in a facility, and there was a need, we would be happy to contract with them, just like we did this year, for those services on an emergency basis, on those bitterly cold nights. I asked them to give me some stats today. So they were allowed to open 56 nights, based on the orders that I signed last winter. From, I think, October 1st through March 30th, they were allowed to open 56 nights. Crazy Faith actually opened on 46 nights and gave us reimbursement requests for those nights. We asked them to keep logs and they did. The average number of people they had a night when they were open was 39. The lowest number was 17. The highest number was 55, was the highest number of people they had there at one time. And they had five nights where they had over 50 people at, at the ministry. I visited them last year, I think they do a great job. They make it available for people who, for whatever reason, feel like they can't go to the Pueblo Rescue Mission. So they, they are providing a service to us in those emergency kind of bases. But we allocated, the city council did 151,000 for, to them for the homeless shelter services. And of that, 112,600 was spent. So that's sort of a report of, of where, where it's at. So our plan would be to do the same thing we did this year. And I don't think that if we bought this building, that, that would be the end of our obligation. I haven't heard anybody say, "If you buy the building, you don't have to pay us the $2,500 a night that we paid last year to keep the, the facility open." So as I understand it, the building that they have an interest in is available for rent. It's available to be leased, based on the listing that I saw. I don't know, have any idea obviously, what the terms of that are, or anything like that. But if that was a possibility and Crazy Faith got in there, we certainly would sit down and work with them in terms of, "Okay, on those bitterly cold nights, if you want to open a shelter, this is what, what we'd be willing to do with you."
So with that, it is available for lease, we're not sure which part, because there's a, a studio on the backside of that, which we want to use. It won't be kept a studio. That will be more of the, the total square footage that we would use for the warming center. So that is an option. So if, if the city would like to work towards that, then we could just see if we can lease that just for the warming center. Because the trouble is, is if, when we, if, if we, when we have our outreach building, we do use that building for church for, for one hour a week. And so, the, the city attorney had said, you know, "We need to keep separation of church and state." And so, that's where we're like, "Okay, if we're going to open up the warming center," we wanted that to be a separate building, just for outreach and just for that warming center, so that we were keeping the separation. And honestly, I wish our services weren't needed. That would be the best thing. But our services are needed. And those people coming in, we would have loved to just stayed home and enjoy winter by the fireplace, fireplace we don't have. But it's needed, and there's just too many people that won't. And if there's a tent going up, they're not going to stay there versus a building, they're just not. Yeah, and then also with the funding, our goal is, if the city is willing to purchase the building, we want to just get grants. We don't want to be back here sitting. Other than an update, we don't plan to, to come back.
We, we want to just get grants to, to help out with the warming center. We don't want to come back and ask the city for any more money.
And we should be able to run that for about 150,000, because our capacity will be doubled. But like I said, we're very frugal. And we don't think that, I think between the city and the, and the county and the churches, we should be able to do this. But I don't think that we should be back here every year asking for more funding. I don't think that that's the way it should be, so.
We'll go Counselor Tencio, then Counselor Graham.
Yeah, if the warming shelter is only used 50-some nights a year, what I'm interested in is the people that you're getting off the streets and getting them services so that they could be productive citizens again, that's three, another 300 days. You need a place so you can provide that service. The, the warming shelter is wintertime only. Yes, we have to provide it, it's very important, but I want to focus on the rest of your mission.
And our doors are open, when we're there... Yeah, when we're there or when we have staff, they're coming in, they're using the restrooms, they're talking to us, we're connecting them with resources, we're helping them. So I think it's my understanding that the Rescue Mission is more, if you can come in, you can sleep here at nine o'clock, if you're like an emergency case. Otherwise, they have to stay there for about nine nights and then they can become a resident.
I, I, I want to focus on the other 300 nights a year.
Exactly.
And that's, and that's your mission basically, based on your mission statement. I want to support that. The warming shelter, of course, that's, doesn't, you know, that...
So it's a bonus, I mean...
I, I want to support the, the other 300 nights, because that's where the real work is happening. Providing some, someplace to sleep for somebody on a cold night. You know, that's just, it's supposed to be done. I want to support the rest of your mission.
And if given the opportunity, I mean, we could probably fill this place with people that wanted to come back in and share their story, on how they became successful, just, you know, through some help on our part.
And that's, that's where I want to put the emphasis.
Counselor Graham?
That, that was kind of the question that I was going to ask, is what would be done at the building the other 300 days a year? And do you have programming that you would be able to offer? What does that look like and how would you be able to fund that?
Well, that's the, the way that we do things, such an individual basis, because everybody is struggling with something different. You know, whether it's families with kids, where dad just lost his job, you know, we're out there helping them. Or whether it's a homeless person that's struggling with addiction and, and mental health. So everybody's so different. And that's part of the problems with them getting services, because they have to go to so many places and who's doing what. And so, we deal with them as an individual, and so we're able to help them until we can help them. You know, until we've provided a solution for them. And so, we're out there working, but, you know, Lonnie and I are spread pretty thin. But the fact that we've been able to show the numbers that we have, you know, 100 a year, and so, we're ready to hire those two staff. And we actually have the staff picked, we just need the building to put them in an office. We don't even have the phone services. I, I'd like the, the business phone to be ringing to the office instead of my phone all night long.
Ms. Lano?
Yes, Madam Chair, to, to add to the, the answer with respect to the plan, we also have, we're expecting next Monday, when we do meet with the Pueblo Rescue Mission, some additional information on a, a, a building that is in the vicinity of where they are, and an option, opportunity for purchase for a permanent warming shelter and additional space. And there is also another nonprofit who I think you've asked to, to come to city council to work more on a transitional housing with the use of a, of a local motel with 64 additional sites. So perhaps a comparison is what staff can put together for what are options and costs. And we can do that, you know, relatively quickly.
Well, I just think we need to take into account that they do all this on a dime, and there's, there aren't these large salaries. I look at a lot of the nonprofits and I look at, you know, salaries into, accumulatively into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so, I like the fact that everything, as much as they can, goes back towards the, what, what, what they're set out to do. And that's to just help the community, save the community.
Well, and if our own money is coming out of our own pockets, I mean, that's how we ran it for the, for several years without any additional help. Because we believe in what we do, because we have seen success in the, the lives that we're helping.
Yeah, that's where the money needs to go, is to the cause, thank you.
Yeah, so I, I don't think we need to duplicate anything either, and also, there's a need. So I think let's see the comparison between the three efforts. And then for the building, I know that, I think it's a very smart move for you not to come out and say, "Hey, this is the building that we're looking for." So perhaps talking about that specific building in an executive session, where we can talk a little bit more about the nitty gritty details, would answer a lot of our questions as well, specifically about renting versus purchasing the space, what the space looks like, what services are there. So perhaps that's our next move.
Yeah, and we did submit that with our proposal, that I believe the mayor has and I believe that the city council has. So you guys should have that, the, the building and all the specs. But I will tell you that that's within blocks from the Pueblo Community Soup Kitchen and within blocks of Pueblo Cooperative Care.
Don't give too many information, don't give so much.
It's close enough to the downtown area to help with the people that are, you know, sitting on the doorsteps, aggravating businesses, but it's far enough from the mayor's office.
Great. Yeah, does that sound like a good next step for everyone? Excellent. Thank you, Crazy Faith, for that presentation. We went over. I think Councilman Flores jinxed us. So we're going to take a brief 10-minute recess before starting our regular meeting in around 10 minutes. And at 7:16, I conclude this work session.